Australia's successful Spanish period, haven't they? Captain of the boat. He's the only country that can get Spanish.
Yeah.
No, we've just walked around it, no, no.
Yeah, yeah. The Americans have got taken by, um, by the back of their ship. They think they're offering a whole bank, but I'm just joking.
We've got to get, uh...
Put in isolation for the next two weeks. We've no, we've no, which is something to regulate.
Well, he was on the unit, and he'd actually, he obviously landed a freight. Go on isolation unit inside it.
Definitely, it's a shame.
A very intense sentence, Christmas time.
Do they remain in control?
Yeah, I do think that.
And our government have rented a hotel at ten o'clock.
We need to get back to that, blocking this from our side.
Right, seven o'clock then, should we make a start then? All right. Then, will you be on action?
That is all, I think.
There's a red light on that.
It's going to be trial and error.
This is real, okay.
So, I might tell them on YouTube.
Sorry?
You're putting that on YouTube?
Eventually, we might get along well until we get that stage.
All right, welcome and introductions, I don't think we need any of that, we all know who. Um, emergency evacuation procedure, filming, recording of meetings, we'll be doing that hopefully.
No.
Commissions from the public, let's do it.
Just please. Couple of points, um. The first one is, um, associated with the upcoming closure of Gypsy Patch Lane. Um, I'm not sure if councillors went to the drop-in event, um, a few weeks ago. Um, one of the things I picked up on there was that they're proposing to, um, trial temporary traffic lights at the mini roundabout on Brayden Avenue, Stoke Lane, Little Stoke Lane, so the top of Brayden Avenue. Um, so, when I asked them the reason for this, it's, um, basically, they, they felt that during the last full closure in June, that, um, traffic was backing up down Little Stoke Lane. Um, and, um, what the purpose of these traffic lights is to give, as I understand it, I may be wrong, to give Little Stoke Lane more priority, um, so to keep the traffic moving on Little Stoke Lane. So, that raises the concern, if you like, that, um, that will be to the detriment of traffic approaching along Brayden Avenue. Um, and now that we've got the Great Stoke Rabbit Roundabout, um, roadworks in operation. What happened, I noticed what happened, um, a few weeks ago was, um, obviously with Bradley Stoke Way, um, restricted, I feel, uh, more traffic is trying to get down Brayden Avenue, uh, you know, and on to the A thirty-eight. Um, so, what happened was, a couple of weeks ago, there were roadworks on Stoke Lane, uh, which caused a massive jam all the way down Brayden Avenue.
Oh, God, goddammit.
Back to the roundabout on Brookway, and then the traffic backed up Brookway all the way to here. So, um, my concern would be that if they implement a system which gives advantage to Little Stoke Lane traffic, that the same thing, it may have the same effect. Um, which basically, as soon as the traffic tails back to the end of Brayden Avenue, uh, starts blocking Brookway, so it starts blocking traffic that wants to go straight down Brookway towards Office Avenue. So, it, potentially, it could be a big problem. On the other hand, I think our hope is that by using traffic lights there, they can make the whole flow of traffic more efficient, so, you know.
Well, that, uh...
They may or not, may not be right.
Brian and, uh, for a bit, you know, and myself attended the community engagement forum.
Oh.
And their solution was to push more traffic down Bradley Stoke Way. I thought, well, hmm, bearing in mind that they knew local people had different local shortcuts, but, uh, to push more traffic down Bradley Stoke Way.
Yeah.
Um, to avoid Gypsy Patch Lane, it seems to me, wow, you know.
I mean, essentially, there are four ways of getting out of Bradley Stoke, uh, obviously, we've got a bottleneck now on Bradley Stoke Way South.
Yeah.
If Brayden Avenue and, uh, the bottom of Brook End becomes blocked, then there's only one way left, which is up to, has to take west. So, it is potentially...
What do you want us to do, write it off?
I'm just, I'm just raising awareness, I think, uh, I think, um, if somebody from this council goes to the stakeholder liaison group, I think, you know, you need to, um, make our, make a case, you know, for our town.
Well, Keith Crunning would be most likely one to, I think, is not the one to do that.
I go.
I'll do it.
We have done.
Well, so, I'm not going to Net on Delis, but I will enroll definitely, um, but I think that they will probably say that it is a work in progress and initially they have to trial things and see how they work, and if they don't work, then I guess they wouldn't change anything.
Exactly what they said, yes.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to tell, because they came, uh, which I, the community engagement forum meeting, the officers came and they explained about the things and patterns. I think it's actually, they're also looking at the patterns, if there was a traffic jams or anything, they are trying to help all right. I think, uh, Brian will be able to explain more because I was, was chair, was chairing the meeting, so.
Chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we were all at the, uh, community engagement forum.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, Mark King spoke very well and he knows it's a problem. It's not actually a situation where it's easily resolvable, just like that, because once you close a major route, um, down there where the bridge is going to be, you know, um, uh, you know, extended and, well. You know, I mean, it's, it's a crazy, it's incredible, isn't it, it's a lot of work. I know in Stoke Lodge, I mean, we were very concerned, right, the outset of huge amounts of traffic coming up from Little Stoke. You know, coming down for Winterborne, in fact, and then deciding, you know, the last minute, or, you know, that would be an easy route for them to come up, because Bradley Stoke gets perilously blocked at some points. I mean, all that traffic we had, you know, up at, um, you know, from, from the north end of Bradley Stoke, um, when we were doing the metro bus, now all that's been sorted, but in reality, it's not because we now we've got this. And, you know, there's, there's three major works going on, right, South Gloucestershire at the moment, and rather than doing one bit and another bit and another bit, the idea is to try and get it all done whilst the money's actually available, because otherwise it won't be done and it needs to be done. So, you know, at the end of the day, I think, um, you know, you've already said it, I mean, you know, it's a work in process, progress, and nobody wants huge amounts of traffic coming down a road.
Yeah.
I mean, we tried to get traffic calming down, down in Stoke Lane at an early stage, some councillors in Stoke Kiffr didn't want any more speed cushions or anything along Little Stoke Lane.
We don't need them now, do you?
No, they've got them, they've got them, but the reality of matter is, one of the re, one of the things is, if you put speed cushions in, it, it does actually mean a lot of people don't want to go down that road, you know, they'd rather go down another road. Um, so, you know, and in fact, you, you know, it will be probably, um, Rabbit Roundabout, which they will come down from eventually, because, you know, to come down all these other little roads like this, it's really unfair.
Yeah.
You know, even that road's got to be improved, so I mean, we're discussing doing all sorts of stuff.
Well, Stephen says this...
Even using, even using the metro bus lane, sacrosanct as it is, to use some cars down there as well, haven't they?
Well, Stephen says it's four ways out of, I think, virtually three of them, they're almost totally blocked, aren't they, almost?
We've got to get the cars at least somehow, or the cars are all coming around it.
But is there one or two minutes on going basis to see, you know, like you said, you know, to change if they see that there's a huge bottleneck then?
Yeah.
There's a cer, there's only a certain number of options, I suppose, that they've got, but the longer on the case...
Well, there are locals, no, no shortcuts, sort of. Um, but, uh, like Little Stoke Lane and that sort of thing, whereas people coming from other directions might not know that, so.
Mm-hmm.
And their solution was push it all down Bradley Stoke Way, which is, wow, tremendous.
So, what's the action out of that decision now then, i- is it, Sean, are you going to be?
Well, just so we can raise it at the stakeholders' meeting, so.
Chair, I mean, the thing is, Steve is right though to bring it up, because, um, you know, um, the bit as, as it comes up through Brayden Avenue is a situation, a lot of people from Bradley Stoke use that as a route. And, um, you know, rather than to come up all the way up around the A thirty-eight, I mean, they're going to have signs to Patch Way, um, coming up Bradley Stoke Way, which they've already done before, but that's going to happen again, so they've got to crawl all the way up. I mean, the easiest route for them is come up Little Stoke Lane and Stoke Lodge, through Stoke Lodge, but that road is incredibly busy anyway.
But they are too short.
And it's a narrow road, it's a very narrow road, it's a bit like, it, it's narrower than a road up here. And then, you know, so, the main, Bradley Stoke Road is obviously the answer, but that gets too busy as well.
Okay, so we need Sean to bring that up at the meeting.
Always. Get the actual writing to be, to that will be documented.
Well, it'll be documented at the meeting, because they'll take notes from the meetings.
We just get patronizing and flirty, you know.
All overlap.
I've got it, hibernation, everyone going hibernation for a sort of twelve months, um, because we've got a little overlap, you know, four months. We'll just go abroad and hardly hibernate.
Self-isolate, like everyone feels obvious.
Okay, Steve, what's your point?
I did have a second point, um, it's the, um, availability of the extension car park at Brookway, uh, activity centre. I think a lot of people in the community are very disappointed that it's not, um, available for, you know, the peak hours of particularly the doctor's surgery. Um, there's, obviously, there's this business about the, um, the headlamps and everything and having to close it off at four o'clock, but that doesn't mean to say it can't be open, um, for the rest of the day. Um, you know, and, uh, a number of people have been commenting about this online, you know, to say that they, um, they have difficulty finding a parking space and people have been parking on the access road, which was the original problem when, when, when this, this, uh, suggestion came up. And I can relate my own experience, I went, had an appointment at the doctor's surgery on Fri, early on Friday morning, and I got there at, um, ten past eight, and there was no problem with parking. Um, but when I came out at ten to nine, um, because I'd had to wait quite a long time, the car park was completely full. There were four cars parked down the access road, there were cars shunting backwards and forwards trying to find a space, which makes it very, a very dangerous situation, particularly with elderly people and frail people going to the doctors. And I looked over to the extension car park and it was empty, and the barriers were there, albeit one or two of them had fallen down. And then I glanced over to the activity centre and it was open, and we'd been told that, um, the car, the extension car park is supposed to be open when the activity centre is in use, but it wasn't. So, I, I popped in and went to the caretaker and said, "Now, why isn't the extension car park open?" And he said, "Oh, sorry, I forgot." I mean, you know, it needs to be better managed, and I, and I think a lot of people would like to see it open all the time and, uh, would like to see the council come up with an idea, uh, a, a, a management scheme whereby it can be left open, say, between eight AM and four PM.
It's just because... Just because of headlights, isn't it, basically, at the moment?
Yeah, so, I think we have to accept it.
Which will be on the summer months.
Yeah, it can close at four PM, but the peak hours of the doctor's surgery is, I think, eight, eight AM till ten AM, probably, maybe, maybe twelve o'clock. So, I think people's expectation is that efforts are made to, to, to make parking available during those hours.
And I thought we've got to plant a lot more trees and, uh, to drive a bigger screen, but obviously, if you have, it's not working, um...
Well, I'm not talking about that.
It'll take a while for them to start.
Yeah, yeah.
Chair. Um, I mean, a couple of things, I mean, I, you know, the doctor's surgery is, the doctor's surgery expanded its size, Bradley Stoke has expanded its size, and in fact, expanded its size even after Bradley Stoke expanded its size. Um, there was planning permission granted, um, for, um, the doctors to have a surgery with them improving the size of the car park. That was actually given them. Um, that particular application was put in by the doctor's surgery after they'd been refused an application where they hadn't actually put in extra parking, it had been pointed out by South Gloucestershire and, um, planning department, the planning members on that, uh, you know, committee, which I was a part of at the time, and that they should be putting an application in with some car parking, so they did, and it was passed. The thing was, what they did also do was to put in an appeal for the original application, which was refused by South Gloucestershire, which didn't have the extra parking, which they had land forward to do, and which Bradley Stoke was quite happy to give them a little bit of extra edge, to, to, to put extra parking, it's not a lot of extra parking, so they just went ahead and needed to actually build a parking. So, in actual fact, we've got a doctor's surgery, which, um, is a business, they make money there in cash, and then there's, um, a community centre, which has got an amount of parking which was overrun sometimes for doctors' parking, and it was deci, decided, um, to actually use that piece of land for some extra parking. It was unfortunate because the levels weren't, uh, looked at into properly, and rather than actually scraping out, um, the, um, the courts and building the thing level, it was determined by someone to save some money and actually just have it so that it was a slope up to the car park. So, anyway, so we're getting back to where we are now, um, there's a management thing put in place by Bradley Stoke to actually close it at a particular time, but open it all the rest of the time at the moment, and if that's not being done, you actually went in and saw one of the managers there who apologised to you.
Yeah.
Okay, no, sorry, he apologised to you, Steve, and the reality of the matter is, we can certainly remind our managers to make sure that it is being adhered to, and we apologise to you that you've had that convenience and you've had to bring it up.
That isn't the extent of the issue though, no.
I don't believe, I don't believe there's a situation where we should be doing anything else.
Brian, what we've been told by the council is that the, the car, the extension car park is closed when the caretaker leaves after the last booking, which, you know, it could be ten AM, it could be twelve PM, when the caretaker leaves, the extension car park is closed.
Well, if, if the actual car park is closed, the extension car park is closed, okay, and there's no bookings.
Or there's no booking.
There's no bookings in that, in that other car park. Surely there's a lot of spaces there, all the people that park in their car all day live locally. I mean, be quite frankly, that's quite a big space of car parking spaces, if the centre's closed, that extension isn't really necessary because that is a huge overflow park for the, for the, for the doctors, it doubles the size of their parking.
That isn't the experience that I've had, or the people have reported.
Well, I'm sorry, but if, if, if the, if the building's closed and the, and the caretaker's gone home, then I cannot see there's a problem. If the, if the community centre is open and the extension to the car park is open at the same time, surely, surely, you know, I don't understand, because we've, we've increased the amount of parking there so that we've got some extra parking for people who are going to use the centre. You know, it's inconvenient that effectively it's causing a problem for people with lighting, but that, that extension to that car park hasn't been built there for the doctor's surgery, it's been built at the community centre.
What's the logic behind closing it? What's the logic behind closing it at ten o'clock?
Because the lights, uh, is running.
Basically, what you've got is you've got, you've got a slope by that, and the other car park up onto that flat area, and the gentleman which actually lives opposite it, whose wife has got, um, a problem, I met her actually, and she has got major problem, and lights actually show right up into the house, right up into the bedroom windows, in fact. Um, it's been demonstrated, we had some photographs down here, um, if you park, I mean, that is, that is the slope, which is absolutely crazy.
Brian, this, Brian, this isn't the issue that I'm bringing to the council, the issue...
No, no, I've actually answered that.
So, you're talking about what happens after when it turns dark.
No, no, sorry, Kerry asked me a question, so I answered it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the point I'm bringing to the council is what's happening during the daylight hours, if you like.
It should be open, shouldn't it?
But it should be open, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So...
Is there another person that could be giving a please to...
If the community centre is open, they've got all that extra parking anyway. It's not, so, it's not to Bradley Stoke to provide parking for doctor's surgery. If you want to have a go at anybody, have a go at the doctor's surgery, because they've got the land, they could build it, they've got plenty of cash coming in, they could do it, it's not a problem.
When we initially looked at the car park extension, the doctors were actually involved and were a part of the plan to extend the car park on their side, and they made a decision from their financial point of view to not proceed that way.
No, but also South Gloucester didn't, didn't go ahead for the extension on their side because it was taking out trees, you know.
That's the reason we've got a slope, is to protect trees and they can switch and get out. We wanted to have it level originally, but we couldn't because we would destroy the tree growth around, around the tennis courts. So, we had, we were, we had our hands tied behind our back in terms of what we wanted to do in the first place. It wasn't a cost-saving measure at all, we wanted to level the whole thing, that was what we were trying to do at planning, and we were told we couldn't do that because of the...
Yeah, well, what I, what I did, I asked for, for effectively, for local members to be involved with the, um, the planning itself, on, on the, on the, uh, how can you put, um, the work which had to be done, and I think if I'd been involved with planning, which I wasn't as a local member, you know, we were cut out of it, so it was basically Bradley Stoke dealing directly with the planners, so that was that. So, you didn't have that, because I could, I could come in there, I could come in there and argue it, because you can always plant trees somewhere else. Effectively, TPOs, those trees were not TPO'd, so they could have come out.
Yeah, but part of the planning process we went through in these committee stages, in our own internal council, we were debate, we were debating it, well, not debating, we were just discussing a lot of that stuff, it's all minute, it's all noted, as to why we had to go down that way.
That's right.
We weren't, we were not as a council trying to say we're going to skimp and save money to put a ramp in, so we're just on top of the tennis courts. We had people raising genuine concerns about damage to the plant life around the area. And we were saying that we had to, we had to do that, we, we'd preferred to have gone the other route. We, we, by trying to satisfy one requirement, unfortunately, we've now introduced another problem that has to be remedied.
Absolutely.
And, well, this wouldn't be, this wouldn't be an issue for us if we'd had a flat, flat level, because then we'd have dug down a foot or two, whatever it is, it's bad foot. And, but that we were, we were told we couldn't do that because we'd damaged all the surrounding plant life, and it was deemed at the time that plant life would actually shield that housing from the rear, and if we did anything to destroy that, the hedge line or that hedgerow, that would be deemed impractical and unbeneficial to our surrounding neighbours.
Well, where, where the, where the car park extension is, is, is built, okay, what bit of hedge line have you damaged?
We haven't damaged anything, right.
Well, you wouldn't have damaged it anywhere, you would have actually taken anything out.
No, 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 we were told, we were told, if we dug down that car park to the level we wanted to dig down to, we would damage the root structure of the surrounding plant life that would have an impact on everything around it. So, all that plant life around what was there at the time of that tennis court, we were trying to avoid damaging it.
They were lying then, weren't they?
I think we're talking about a done deal, aren't we?
We, we did...
Yeah, anyway, yeah.
I, I think it would be dug out for the, the court problem.
Chair, I think, right now, the futuristic one is to actually shield that place and open it, because otherwise it would be a big investment.
Should this go to the planners?
No, all we need to do is we just remind, we'll remind the leisure systems that they need to make sure when the site is open, the car park is open.
Yeah, yeah.
However, I think part of the problem is that the car park isn't available when the activity centre is closed, that's part of the problem. That's the other issue I'm bringing here.
Do you want the doctor's surgery set?
But then, that's the issue.
And, and I don't think the concern is after four PM, because, uh, things aren't that busy then. So, I think all this, uh, discussion about ramps and trees is irrelevant to the point that I'm bringing here.
But that's the reason why it's...
Yeah, the reason it shuts the lighting, you should.
But, but the ramp, surely the lights, you know, on a car going up the ramp, okay, might dazzle the second floor, but as soon as the car is on a level, um, surely the lights don't dazzle any further.
Shouldn't affect it.
Shouldn't affect it, so it's only that split second when the cars are going up the ramp that the lights are at a, at a acute angle that shines upon the second, the second floor bedrooms, surely, I mean, they're making a mountain of a mola, surely, yeah.
But John Rendell told me that he's planned to put the shield, that screen, whether, but any progress of that, I think it isn't part of that project.
There's a screen up and we've planted more trees, yeah, that's what, that's what we're doing for now, until the trees take root and be planted, but we will, we will speak to the leisure systems and see what we can do to get it open during the day.
That's only solved me half of the issue that I've raised, the other issue is that when the activity centre isn't in use, the extension car park isn't in use, and that's potentially a problem as well. So, why can't there be some system, I'm not proposing anything, whereby the car park, the extension car park is opened at the beginning of the day, seven AM, and closed at four, four PM.
That's what you're saying, let's give it to the leisure systems and see what we can do.
When, when we proposed the closure of the car park, what exactly did we propose and have seconded and voted on to which enabled the plant, which enabled that to happen? The exact wording, do you have it in the minutes?
From what?
We, we, at one stage, we voted to say that that car park should be closed at a certain period of time. Due to the complaints we had from residents, so what was it we actually proposed? Was it a timeframe?
Yeah.
Which is it closes after four o'clock and it's open regardless of the centre's open or not, or was it it closes when the centre closes?
Close at four o'clock, yeah.
That's a full council meeting now.
Close at four o'clock, that's the proposal.
Hold on a second, Brian, let's go.
Sorry?
Four o'clock.
Is that what we said?
Was it a full council meeting, was it a planning meeting or a...
No, full council meeting.
Was that in November when I was there, I think.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, right.
Because that would just put the issue ahead, because we voted on it already.
But so, until four.
This is what I'm saying, so is, was the proposal initially for the closure when the leisure system leaves, or was it as it's been timed?
Close at four.
Steve had recollected.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure, but I know shortly, shortly after that had been decided, I went up there just simply to take a photograph of it, and I found...
There was never a proposal made, it just said premises manager John Rendell agreed to not open the car park past four o'clock whilst investigations are taking place.
Oh, right.
So, to me, that implies when the centre's open, it's open at four o'clock.
It should be open at four.
It should be four o'clock.
And, and later in the summer, basically.
Yeah.
Should be, about eight o'clock in the summer.
We will speak to the leisure system and we will put something in place.
Okay, right, number two. Apologies for absence.
Then?
Hang on a second.
All right, sorry. I haven't got any time.
Uh, yes, I have, uh, councillor Jane Hardwick and the representative from Bradley Stoke and Dean.
Oh, right. Okay. Number three, declarations by members under the government's act, anyone have any changes? No?
No.
We all happy with that, Owen? Right. Announcements by the chair, I've just got a couple of things I'd like to say, how extremely disappointed I was with the, uh, planning application for McDonald's, Starbucks at the Willowbrook.
Yeah, yeah.
How one inspector can overrule two or three hundred objectors, Bradley Stoke Town Council, headmaster of the school, and there were less than sixteen district councillors from all political persuasions, plus, you know, all the district councillors locally, how one person can overrule that, and there's, doesn't seem to be any method of challenge in it. Uh, it's just a shame that, uh, under the current proposal, planning inspectors are a total law unto themselves, and, you know, it's not even decided by a panel, just one person, so, very, very disappointed in that.
Is there really no way of...
The centre in the High Court on a point of legality, which, uh, doesn't necessarily mean the change of decision, even if they find out there was a, a point of illegality on it, and that's the only challenge you can have.
But is there a criteria that says, you know, if you've got that wealth of opposition?
Yeah.
How is it, what rules say that that person, just one person, can overrule it?
That's the way it's set up. It's a bit appalling, isn't it, I think, yeah, there you go.
Just doesn't seem to, it seems, it seems...
We're stuck with it now, and when all the chickens go out to roost and, uh, you have trouble getting on to the Willowbrook because of traffic problems and building problems.
Yeah, but they won't be bothered because they will have their money, won't they, because that's what it's all about.
Oh, yeah, 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 it's all money, yeah, it's all money related, yeah, yeah.
Greed.
There's the power of McDonald's, I mean, I'm told that, uh, uh, having somebody who's seen McDonald's in action is, uh, uh, they, they bring in top barristers, you know, it's like a, like a court of law, you know, it's, uh, appeals, and you've got no chance, the average person has got no chance, and so, we're stuck with that, check. Um, the other thing, which, uh, Frankie you know about, um, is that South Gloucestershire have set aside a fund of thirty thousand, this is the whole of South Gloucestershire, for celebrations for VE Day in June, okay? A which individual parishes and towns can lodge a request against.
Mm-hmm.
But that depends, of course, we need to decide what sort of celebrations we'd like. Um, I mean, this is probably for full council, but when full council comes in, when the next full council is, it's a bit much longer.
There is a group who are, uh, a group who are getting together, who are looking at running an event for VE Day, and I have already told them about this thirty thousand pound.
Right, okay, right, yeah, we will get it, we can have it all, but we could, we could have a few, few quid, I don't know.
Yeah, so they are aware of it and are putting up, putting the money, yeah.
If, if we do it quickly, because other, other parishes and towns will be also putting in their bids as well.
Yeah.
So, so what is it, something on the green?
There are, there are...
It's the Bradley Stoke Carnival Committee, they're re, re-repte in themselves, I'm not sure whether they've been in contact with, contacted you yet, Marion. It's Bradley Stone Carnival Committee, they're re, re-erecting themselves, I'm not sure whether they've been in contact with, contacted you yet, Marion. Yeah, I think they're having a meeting this week and they are going, someone's going to the meeting with the forms to apply for the grant funding, so they are, yes, yeah.
All right, so we, so we got no idea what we want to do, sort of.
Well, it's not us, it's the carnival, yeah.
I think we should, as a council, we should collaborate with them to do something.
We should sneak in our ideas of what we think.
Not just the group, but as a council, we should collaborate with them and them.
So if anyone's got any ideas on that, yes, Tom?
Yes, do you have any other points, otherwise I would like to support what just talked to Franklin mentioned. As, let's say, voluntary group's been doing it for all the years as a carnival committee. I think it's better to actually, they run it and we support it and help them, and I think it's a wonderful opportunity. anniversary, and they talk to me, and so I give them my full support, and that's the eighth of May, so then we have to, see. Whether feasibility of that, how children's schools can be moved and a lot of things.
Oh, if we're quick enough, we might get two or three thousand out of South Gloucester, but, uh.
Yeah.
Any more, I think it might be, might be deemed a bit greedy, but.
Let's see, uh, but that will be a good opportunity, can I, as chair of the council, can I make some announcements directly add on?
No, no, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, and I think you also join me in for the Chinese New Year celebrations, which is good, and a few other celebrations as well as schools programmes which I attended.
No, you joined me.
Yeah, also just one directly, last week, last, last Saturday, isn't it, Frankie?
Yeah, last Saturday.
Uh, the interha commission done a council of camp over here, which the council Franklin attended, and it was well attended, more than four hundred people came in. So that was actually first time, now it's redone. And just, uh, right now, also as being part of the multi-feet forum, just inform them. Twenty third of February, that is next Sunday, they are putting up a programme on diverse doors open day. Opening up doors of all faith groups, travelling through, exploring it, it's a faith play, it's called diverse doors open day. Morning, from Sunday morning.
Where's yours?
Bristol, and different parts, Giridwarra, Sinigor, uh, the Moors Church, Greek Orthodox Church. And all sorts of places, in the temple, everywhere, so there's seven places I'm going, so that will be a wonderful thing, I will request everyone to join. Thank you.
Okay, right.
Chair, this one, next meeting of the car in the water, look it up, sixth of March, one P M.
Are you on that?
Sort of, yeah.
You are, oh, right, well, you could have some good ideas then, presumably.
What, what is that?
It's sixth of March, one P M, the next, the next meeting, um, we already had one meeting, Tom, I'm not sure you actually managed to get to that meeting or not, I think. You did manage to get to it, um, so we've had the one meeting, um, and they're, they're getting some stalls and things like that.
Right.
Up together as well, so, uh, but the next meeting's the sixth of March.
I'd be on here with it.
So, uh, you know, well, Bradley Stone Radio's involved with it as well, so, so.
Okay, thanks for that, then.
So, it has got some money, obviously, so is it?
They've got a few pounds from the last previous cap, count, uh, cap, uh, but it's only a few quid in the, in the till. And, uh, I think a few people, I think Sarah and Franklin haven't been approached yet to put anything in from the math money. Um, but that was an idea to try and get it, get it started. However, because this money is available from South Gloucestershire at the moment, they're looking to tag that in. Um, so they've got the forms ready to, to go with that, well.
Oh, that's, that's good.
So, uh, and, and in reality, it, it, it does something quite important actually to link it in with that, so it's quite a good.
What's the day it's actually happening?
Um.
The May, May eighth.
Friday, yeah, Friday the eighth of May, I think it is.
I, I think, I think, I think it's on the cusp of, um, Tom still being mayor, actually. That was part of it, I think.
It's not in June, no.
No, it's May, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's actually the, the bank holiday, Friday.
I mean, the other, the other card was always about holiday, but it was always a problem, because the, the situation is that a lot of people are on holiday. As far as I was concerned, it was a great time for a situation where people that couldn't afford to go on holiday and all just have another celebration. That was the whole idea of putting it in all just in the first place. However, it did mean that lots of groups, like primary groups and public groups, um, was more difficult to, to do, because. A lot of people in those groups were on holiday, so to bring it forward, uh, and have it in four June. Was more, more, more relevant possibly. The only, only thing uh, about, about that is now that this other funding has come out. So it's been planned for, um, good sort of seven months, eight months.
Yes, Tom.
Yeah, this one you add, because it's part of the schools, I've been to their school recently, a primary school. When I explained this one, the idea of the celebration, many people and teachers, they're also happy to join it, and they're, they're welcome it.
Which primary school?
The group pay, uh, the.
Both of you?
Most men, most men.
Yeah.
Both of you?
So that's.
My son, my son is there. It's gonna, it's gonna be a lot, a lot easier, a lot easier.
Obviously, they'll be offered to join, shouldn't they?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot easier, I think, uh, to do that, so.
Okay, so that's.
They've got to keep it a go, haven't they, really?
Okay, what's the feedback from your son?
He was happy, yeah.
But are all its schools being invited to join as well, though?
Yeah.
They are, they are, that's good, yeah.
I hope.
You hope?
Yeah, that's, that's, that, that's a proposal to all the schools to be involved, that's one of those, some of those, that was one of the things which I proposed, which they agreed. And I proposed, they happily agreed, and it's actually hard work, and, uh, thanks for the people who've been elected chair, treasurer, I hope. They will trust her and the secretary, they will explain it.
Okay, is that all on that one then? Right, let's move to confirm the minutes of the meeting, how long sixteen of December. So I have a proposal for that. Ben, second one? Trying to. All those in favour?
Two, three, four, five, six in favour. That's two extensions.
Yeah, that wasn't there. Right, okay.
Can you initial every page and sign the date of last page, please?
Is that ideal?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay.
No, it's ideal, but she's known as Dad.
Oh, right, Dad boy.
Is it a, is it a pressure box or not?
There you go.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, to deal with matters arising from the minute, how long is summer sixteen, coming elsewhere on the agenda? Update on groupway activity centres, do you want to know?
This is just to say we're awaiting installation of the drop down bollards, so we're going to have your own barriers of drop down bollards.
Okay, right.
Thank you.
Update on provision of leisure equipment on the Jubilee, on the Jubilee Green.
That one and the next one, the Muga, they're also covered in Graham's report, so.
Right, so the next one is seven point one, which is Graham's report, so over to you, Graham.
You have it tabled?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, tabled, uh, two pages in front of you and some photos, um. On the back of, uh, the photos are from our, it's become a bit of an annual event now, our Girl Project Xmas ice skating trip. And as the years go by, it's become busier and busier, so we've had, uh, twenty, twenty-two. Uh, girls and young women attend, uh, that event. Uh, the numbers are up and around that on a weekly basis now, we're getting new, uh, members joining. And we're keeping most of the older members, which is good. Um, yeah, it's, it's, that's the very positive part of our work at the moment, um. Where are we, regular youth work sessions at State Park, the building is coming in very useful there, because. The weather, particularly on Thursday nights, I've never known, um, in the six years or whatever I've been here, I've never known such a run of appalling weather on a particular night. Um, so we tend to do double extended sessions there and not do the Jubilee session here. And just get the leisure assistance, so that session is often like four thirty till nine o'clock. It's quite a long session, but they're really positive and you get quite a throughput of, um.
Could they use a skate park when it's pouring down with rain, or is it?
Well, no, but that's the benefit of having the building, even if the skate park is not in use, the building is providing a building-based youth work, uh, resource. Uh, and as I say in the report, further down as well, um, people turn up now, even though it's pouring down with rain, so they're not turning up just to use a skateboard. They're turning up to come to a youth work session in the building. Um, young volunteers, um, we've got, as I mentioned before, two young people, a young woman, year, these are year twelve volunteers. Uh, as part of their volunteering component, uh, which I have now as year twelves. Um, she works with me every week, uh, we've got another young person who I see occasionally, but. Part of his product, product design is he's, that working up design ideas and things for the development of the inside of the. Shipping container and hopefully will be involved in development of some items of furniture. Uh, we're now joined every Thursday by a year ten volunteer. Who, uh, he's going to be doing his work experience, uh, the last week of term with me, so that's really good, because he's working on stuff, he's a skate park regular. Uh, and he's getting involved with events and start updating some of our social media, the skate book, skate park Facebook page and Instagram sites, et cetera. Um, theatre and education, the, um. Police, it's all through the police, but they've offered funding because there was multi-agency concern, which I've reported before. Um, around, uh, particularly in the schools, there was a lot of concern about, um. Um, sort of developments of county lines and knife crime, even though county lines, according to the police, have not become a real issue in South Gloucestershire of yet. Uh, one of the things we looked at was some theatre and education work, so we've got a theatre company called Auto Ego. Who have a very good reputation, they're doing, um, one particular performance around child criminal exploitation. In the schools and some other South Gloucester youth projects, but in this area, we're doing stuff around, uh, knife crime. So it complements what's going on in the schools, so. We're gonna have a performance in this very room Tuesday week, um. That's sort of focusing on the girls project, because it's like the logical group to do the stuff with, because. The other stuff we do is mainly sort of detached and we haven't got the space, so that's what we're gonna be doing in a couple of weeks' time, so I'll give you some feedback on how well that goes. Uh, we approved previously, um, paving the outside area at the skate park, where we talked about, outside the building. Um, that's starting now, uh, well, well, we'll start after half term. We, uh, didn't think it's a good idea to start this week, when we thought it might be busy there, but obviously with the weather at the moment, not so busy. Um, staff training, so, and this sort of links with the recruitment thing, it's a problem, as I've reported before. Um, about recruitment of part-time youth workers at the moment, we're still continuing, uh, hoping to work with. The youth work partners, um, these are the people we initially submitted the bids for the South Gloucester money, which we've drawn down, the revenue money. So that's working with Southern Brooks and Face and Thornbury, et cetera. Um, but yeah, we're, we're developing a training package with South Gloucester Council as well, um, uh, around induction. Uh, training for potentially new youth workers, so we're hoping that will be part of our recruitment package, that. Uh, we can sort of, that sort of advertise really the opportunities at the same time as trying to get people involved for some induction training. Um. The other parts sort of expand on that a bit. Food chair, food cloud, uh, they're the people we get a lot of free food and stuff from, uh, had a, a review meeting with them. Um, they're very pleased with what we're doing, but they're also pleased to see that, um, the kitchen is gonna be refreshed soon as part of the redevelopment. So they're pleased to see that. Right, Jubilee Green fitness area, there has been, uh, we seem to have, uh, woken up a few of the people who we've been chasing. All of a sudden, I've got, uh, I haven't got everything to write a report yet, but we've got a lot of sort of. If you remember, um, a couple of months ago, well, four months ago, we approved the options we wa, we wanted for the Jubilee, and we were going for. Uh, a calisthenics type approach with some more traditional equipment. We've now had that option interpreted with another, one company has actually sent me five options based around that, costing between. Uh, twenty-nine thousand and eighty thousand. Um, and I'm awaiting other proposals in terms of their mugger costings, that's the thing I'm, uh, because we have to do. Extend the hard courts by that additional strip, that's like the fly in the ointment really, in terms of getting some clear costings. Because we have to extend that to keep it compliant with Sports England and other dimensions in terms of court markings. But yes, it is, it is sort of moving, I've had a few conversations with Sport England around, um, possible monies. Uh, there are still a fair amount of pots of money for capital funding, which is good, so. Hopefully, it's all starting to come together a bit, so I'll have a more positive, uh, hopefully we move forward on that, and I'll have a report for you. In two months' time with a clear costing options, which we can then use for the fundraising stage in detail. Um. I think that's about it.
Right, but is Jubilee Green Fitness Area, that twenty-nine to eighty, is that in our budget, or is that outside?
No, there's a very small amount of pump priming money, the idea is to try and link that with the, the multi-use games area. And draw down some significant funding.
Okay.
A bit like the skate park, we, we use a, a fifth of the.
Any other questions, Graham?
Okey dokey.
So this Tuesday one, how, what time, what time is the programme?
Sorry?
The Tuesday programme, you mentioned Tuesday every week, the girls programme?
Girls project, yeah.
Yeah, what time, to what time is that?
The core session times are seven till nine, but they tend to start arriving. Anytime after half-six, so we don't make them stand at the door, so they, if they come early, they come, but. The most important thing is, without going into sort of detail, is the, the support work we also. Do around that in terms of one-to-one support around mental health issues and other things like that, which, um. Often happen outside of those sessions.
You mentioned about twenty, sure, twenty dollars a comment for that programme every week?
Yeah, pretty much so, it's somewhere between, uh, like I said, we took twenty-two on the actual trip. Uh, but any week, uh, the minimum you'll get is about fifteen, but sometimes up to twenty-four, but fairly sort of consistent.
So is it primarily from the secondary school here, or what is the criteria of getting children?
It's thirteen, thirteen to, uh, seventeen is the, the core age range.
Okay. Where's that from, Paul?
I was just gonna say, you've got the resource then, haven't you? Do you have one-to-one mental health discussions with them?
Well, I'm, I'm a professionally qualified youth worker, I'm a Thrive licensed practitioner, I've done lots of one-to-one stuff, so. What I see it more as is supportively signposting, so, um, for example. Like I say, I've come, been in films and stuff, so.
Well, I was thinking more about, because there is only one of you, I think, isn't there? There is only one of you?
There's only one professional worker, but there's, I work with two other people, yes.
And in regards to the mental health, because I'm just thinking that's actually taking, that's actually expanding quite significantly now, isn't it, the need for people or young people to have the ev- the uh opportunity of discussing their mental health, you know, with all things about social media and all of this type thing, and I was just really wanting to understand if thirty, you say, people turn up on a week, whether they could all be seen, uh or they could all have a discussion with you or other people.
I thi- I think the most important thing is that you or we as a project or as a youth work provision are seen as being, what I always talk about, as being psychologically accessible. So they're not just coming to a space, but they feel that they are able to maybe raise issues, I always talk about the notion of supportive signposting. And what I mean by supportive signposting is not just saying, oh, here's a leaflet, go off down, go off the record, but having a conversation about how, now, there's one person, for example, who following the Tuesday session, came in, talked to me at the Thursday session, updated me on some stuff, talked about accessing, oh, there's an organisation called Cuthnow, which is like online counselling for young people, which is freely accessible. And uh not feeling confident about phoning that organisation, so we've arranged to that she comes to see me, I phone the organisation for her, introduce, you know what I mean, so it's about, because a a lot of the stuff is getting over the threshold to access provision, and I think professional youth work, when it's done well, is helping do that. So stuff around LGBT issues or racism or whatever, I think young people see how you respond to those issues and if you're responding to those issues as part of your day-to-day activity. So, you know, that I think gives them the confidence to then make approaches.
I completely agree, I just think it seems a lot for one person or a couple of people to be dealing with like thirty, potentially thirty.
Well, it's not all gonna happen, uh you know.
All at once, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and it's uh, but yeah, tha- that's what you do, there's a lot of, there's specialist agencies out there, there's not enough and there's not enough time. And they're all in and, I mean, you look at, you know, CANS for example, you know, children's mental health agencies, it's often six months waiting list for young people to access CANS. Um uh so it's not good, but the issue is now something that people are at least starting to talk about. And after like what happened to Caroline Flack at the weekend and the rest of it, there, there, there's sort of there's various media moments that put those sort of things into the sort of public focus in a greater way. It's just how long they stay in the public focus and what we do with them and that we don't forget about them within a short space of time again.
And you don't, uh, one more thing, okay. You mentioned regarding racism, uh how many children wish race that, uh wish as an issue, race?
How, how many, is it an issue?
Uh how many children come with racism as an issue?
Not necessarily racism as an issue, I would say.
Mentioned that, you, in your.
I, no, I did, I did mention it, yeah, and I mentioned it because having worked in multicultural environments in central Bristol for many, many years, I did find that when I first started working in Bradley Stoke, it was like rewinding ten, fifteen years in terms of the amount of challenge I would be making as a youth worker to a lot of the attitudes of young people.
Okay.
So I think, I think it's not about necessarily, um it's about proactively um promoted.
So that's nothing, that was a, I saw a question, so it was, is it happening here or not, that was my question, so how many happened in Bradley Stoke? So nothing or yes or no, five numbers, two numbers?
I think there, I think there's a lot of, what in terms of racism.
Yeah, you mentioned that.
I would say I have, there's a lot of racist attitudes, yes, I would say.
Okay, so that you don't have any, but uh out of these twenty-two or twenty-three children you mentioned, how many from other big backgrounds?
Uh currently, there's, 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 I think two mixed race, dual, multi-heritage young people. There's, there's young people from Polish backgrounds, for example, so uh if, um if you talk about, I don't know if you're talking about people of colour, people from diverse backgrounds, but we are, we are getting people who, you know, like issues around racism towards Polish people, for example, is, is quite common, I think, um unfortunately, and increasingly so.
Yeah, any kind of racism can have to be charged, but one of the things which, because the ethnic makeup of the Bradley Stoke right now is twenty percent of the people from other ethnic back- backgrounds, so, but I couldn't see anybody representation in that group. So that's the reason why I asked you specifically, because, yeah, so one of the things. Um that's just for your advantage, so it's sometimes in future with the right, your.
Uh but it is, I think you're totally right, I, I've alw- I've always been struck by, and I'm more than happy to have a longer conversation with you, because the, the makeup of Bradley Stoke, there is a significant minority ethnic population, in fact, the biggest within South Gloucester, but that's not necessarily represented either within the mainstream secondary schools, is it?
There is, there is.
Would you say twen- you would say twenty percent of Bradley Stoke's secondary school?
The top scores, even in the top scores of Bradley Stoke's school, that's a matter of fact, just for information. So it doesn't matter, I don't like clicking anybody, but as you have mentioned.
The last statistics I saw, it was not representative of the wider, of the wider community.
I don't know, this is. I'm not sco- talking about this.
Do you all have a chat with?
And this one, this is a school one. Yeah, no, no, this one, the council is an opportunity, because this one, you mentioned, always this, it's a continued license and meetings with the councillors. But I haven't seen any much contact from you, so that is actually one of the opportunities directly to talk to you regarding that, that's the reason.
Oh, there you go. Right, we all finish on that one then?
Can I just, can I just say one thing? Um I think this thing about um this lady Flack which came up, which was very sad. And um there's a few people have actually made the comment now about trying to be a bit kinder to each other. Um and I've seen quite a few posts which have not, actually back there recently, which have been on uh the media about saying things like, you know, if you haven't got anything good to say about somebody on the internet, then you shouldn't say it. And quite frankly, do, I mean, we've got a media person here tonight. And, you know, the reality is, I think there's too much of, too much media out there, too many blogs actually decrying things or people trying to do or do things in a good way, in a bad manner, they don't know the people, but just basically jump on the bandwagon, and I think the sooner that we can stop that happening, the better, so any kind of help for Steve would be grateful, thank you, Steve.
I, I think, I think that's, that's, that's right, but I think the sort of algorithmic nature of a lot of social media means that you end up in your own little silo. Whereas, you know, if someone made an outrageous comment in front of people, their friends, they might have turned around and said, well, that's a bit out of order. But unfortunately, you're almost in this
Yeah.
social media silo where everyone is being equally unkind, as you put it, as as the other people, so it almost gives sort of licence to that way of thinking.
It was the media that basically was drumming it, the trolls etcetera, all the time, and had concerns about it. And that's what actually would be triggered it, it's really bad.
Okay, right, shall we move on then, seven point two. Youth activists, originally youth activists had a community festival, which you provided a, provided a report on that.
Go back to me again, well, this is pretty much uh the usual package that we put together, which is usually really successful. This is, remember, this is two full days of activity. Um there's been some uplift, which has happened uh elsewhere in the festival budget in terms of Bristol ambulance, they've um but in terms of King's rants, they've held the same uh price, um circus workshops are the same price, materials are a similar price. Um I've, I've done a slight uplift on the graffiti artists, but that's only because we end up doing a very, very long session. Um so that's not an increase in the actual hourly rate, that's just an increase in the hours. Um because last year, I think as we discussed before, we were still doing stuff at six o'clock, weren't we?
Would queue, please, if I'm able to do that graffiti board, yeah.
Okay. Uh so yeah, that's basically it, um we now have, we had a sort of um as you've seen the actions, we have a youth budget for the festival of five K, and this is a little bit over, so we have to come in the same code, but just another little pot of money.
Anyone got any questions, uh others at all? Or, have you? Um, okay, yeah. Would you like to propose it, Tom? Who's the second there? Brian, okay, all those in favour? And that is you, anyway.
Oh, sorry, can I just say one thing, it's sort of in there, but might be hidden in the body of the report, we've, we've pencilled in provisionally booked, um a potential Olympian BMX rider as uh to do demos for us for two days. However, because he makes his living out of it, um he, if he's called to another festival or something or another event, then we'll have to get someone else, but in theory, that's some, someone we might be able to.
Tony Hawk sort of there?
Um his name's, what's his name, Clark, Jack, Jack Clark. He's all over social media and a positive word.
Okey dokey.
So if it's things that way, but we might be able to headline, use that as a, another little promo thing for the festival.
Seven point three, Bradley Stoke in Bloom, update by Stephen Bloom.
And I just, um, yeah, so you've got the written report, um and then I've got the, uh, an email report as well, just to add on to this report, because that was from January, so Bradley Stoke in Bloom added three rows of hedging plants behind the beach hedge. We had to replant a couple of beech too, as they were with exposed roots, they're just whipped, so it would take a while before they have much impact. Also planted a few bird, bird cherry and rowan, and we would like to install a few bird boxes. Our last workday was the beginning of Storm Kira. So only three brave souls ventured out, but the area behind Brookway Doctor's Surgery was weeded, pruned, litter picked, planted, paths cleared, swept, drains emptied, and also manifarm roundabout and corners. There was a lot of blackthorn cuttings which had been put on top of the line of day lilies under the rail, which took a long time to remove. The Dog and Gate sign had been removed for repair, Palmer's Corner and Beehive Roundabouts have also been tidied up. Our next workday will be another tidy-up session starting around Aztec. In conjunction with the Bradley Stoke Zero Carbon Group, there's a plan to host an Earth Hour Picnic in the Dark from eight-thirty to nine-thirty PM on March the twenty-eighth. With the usual fun, i.e. glow-in-the-dark bowling, making s'mores, stargazing, telling stories by torchlight and backwatching. It will be free to come along, it's a fun way to promote a serious message, we're thinking of hosting this at Jubilee Green, as although it's brighter, it is more accessible than Savages Wood. And then she said, a small group I've met to discuss restart in Carnival, we envisage it being brought forward as a spring event and being on Friday the eighth of May, in the FE Day theme. There will be a poster competition for the schools after the parade, there will be a street party, and I hope that the tables will be booked in advance by groups and families, prizes to the best decorated table, there's a plan for stalls in the evening, we're hoping to have an outdoor screening of Dad's Army. She says, I've approached um um previous Carnival members, I'll ask if we can claim the old Carnival Facebook, email and bank account. That's our take.
Share, share, I just, first of all, I want to thank all the Bradley Stoke in Bloom for doing a wonderful work, I mean, I mean, that's a important part of every week, they're coming out and doing things, volunteering for this community, that's really, that's uh one thing. Second part, which you mentioned regarding the Carnival committee, which that's also, I hope, someone will be, that's actually a very interesting thing. But the spring theme, because Bradley Stoke, if you look, we have the Summer Festival, the Community Festival, we have for the autumn time, we have the fireworks display, so that's the key, so when we are having the winter time, we have the Christmas celebrations and other things. So it's, the spring theme is really great, and I welcome that, and uh thank you.
The only uh thing I, comment I would make is I've never heard of cherry bird tree.
Cherry bird tree.
Is that, is this new to me, I've heard of a cherry tree, but cherry bird tree, is that misspelling, was it cherry, something?
That's what you've got, bird cherry and rowan.
Bird cherry?
Bird cherry and rowan.
Does anyone hear of that? It's gone now.
I have to look it up, but yes, it, it's correct.
Okay. How's that different from a normal cherry tree then?
It's a different variety, it's particularly attractive to birds, yeah.
Jeff, I'd, I'd just like to say that uh Sour Messenger is basically behind this one again, and Denise Evans, they are the people which are sort of pushing this for the carnival. I'd like to say thank you for Andy, and, and they've got a hard act to follow, because Andy really sort of pushed the boat out with the carnival, he helped me push the carnival, put the carnival in place in two thousand and thirteen, which I thoroughly enjoyed, and I carried on for a few years, and it was a hell of a lot of work, absolutely amazing amount of work that Andy went through to do that, so uh hold on, Andy, and I think it, you know, I think this is hopefully now will be a, another start for somebody wanted to, to do something successful, so I think you can give kind to them, it would be good.
Okay, right. Section eight, community grant funding applications, service level agreement, no, that one. Eight two, community development grant aid update by Brightstone Radio, we've got a nice, nice.
In your agenda pack, you also have a representative from Bradley Stoke Radio, and I'll try and questions.
Would you like to give us a verbal, verbal call for?
Yeah, so just to give you, because this was um the January update that you've got in your packs, but just to give you a, a quick summary as to what's happened in January. Um in the month, we've had twelve new radio programmes um coming to our schedule, which is a phenomenal amount of work from new people and old members, mentoring and um helping people come into the, the group, so twelve new programmes. Um we've got um previous well-established programmes now that are repeated in the week as well. Um that have um big listenerships that we know about, do our online broadcasting and comments. Um we've got a further five shows starting in the next couple of weeks or are um in the pipeline in development, so new programming is coming on, which um are very varied from um afternoons of tea dance, big band type programming, um the, the community content programmes. Um another young, a couple of young people are gonna do another show, um and um younger people doing dance, trance and that kind of music late at night on Fridays, so a massive range of music programmes and and community content that's coming in. And socially, um also although we are a radio station and we're broadcasting, that's really important and it's great to have all these programmes, I really wanna say um again how much of a community group it is and how we support each other um through mental health issues that's already been raised, it is a big issue in the media and it is a big issue in the people that come into the radio station as well. Um we have a number of people that suffer with um depression and that is exacerbated by fear of missing out through things that are on social media, even in the young adult world, that is a, a, a real issue. Um so we are there for each other in those situations. We have um, I'd say a young, a, a middle-aged presenter who recently lost his partner to, to cancer, um and has had a break from the radio station but has come back in because it's a safe space for him to do something that's out of the world of work, out of his family, and something that, that he can do just to, to escape what's happened recently in his life that's been pretty awful. Um and, and, and the support is there in that group. Um and, and we have another member who um was rushed to hospital suddenly and made it to the top of the cardiology list, which doesn't happen, you don't go from um from visiting the doctors to Southmead, to the BRI, to the ca- um cardiac surgeon uh within twenty-four hours usually, but this, this person did, um and we're supporting him as he, as he recovers from some pretty horrendous major um psychological trauma really, of going through that as well as major open heart surgery. So as well as a radio station, we are. Of going through that as well as major open heart surgery. So as well as a radio station, we are supporting each other, um, physically and mentally. Um, in all sorts of life events. And it's been quite a tough time since Christmas with all these, these, these things going on. But there's been some really good news stories as well. We have a young lad, um, who volunteers for us, who is, um, really, he's really going places. If you want to see a young man taking an opportunity and running with it, this young lad is doing that with bells on. Um, so he's doing videos for us, he's got his own radio show, and this week, um, he had an article printed in National Youth Magazine Week Junior. Um, and the article is all about Bradley Stoke Radio and, um, his, um, his radio show that he does on there and, and what he's gained from, from being on air. So we, yeah, um, and we have had, um, we've been supporting another community radio station in the Bristol area. With a bid for audio content fund for a social series, um, that they're going to produce, which is, uh, big news in the radio world. A grant of ten thousand pounds has been awarded this particular community radio station. We're supporting radio stations, so Bradley Stoke Radio's logo has been bandied around in the radio world. With the likes of Absolute FM, Virgin Radio, um, and lots of other radio stations as well. So, um, it is, we've had some real highs and some real lows, as well as working in the community and with each other. So it's been absolutely, yeah, it's been cracking since Christmas.
Okay.
And we're going to pay attention.
Coming to the old person's afternoon tea.
Yeah, and our, our events are filling up, but I can't tell you all the events because that's the future, um, future reports.
Thanks for that, thanks very much. It's been positive. Do you have any comments, Brian? As you're.
Well, only about the young man, because, um, I remember seeing when I was at the part of the radio station, his email coming through. Asking him to be engaged, and it was an amazing sort of, um, email which came through, just saying, say, just saying a little bit about him, that he was doing videos of this and that and everything else. And putting it on YouTube. And how old is he now?
Um, he's still fourteen.
Still fourteen, he's late, so it might shock you. I think he was about thirteen at the time. And it was amazing the stuff that he, he'd been putting together. Uh, so, um, really, really sort of part of the community radio station, haven't we?
Uh, and it's great. So our, yeah, our volunteer age group runs from fourteen, that, that young man doing that, and he's putting some of our older members to shame, really. Um, so he's fourteen, but our oldest, oldest member is, um, I have to be careful now, because it's not who I think it is. I think he's eighty-seven.
Oh, no.
And, and he's learnt how to run the desk, um, and, and operates the equi- the equipment and set up playlists and stuff. And, and that's been quite a challenge to someone of that age, but comes in every week with his wife and they do a radio show. And that's, that's been amazing to see people learning new skills and being active and in, in the community and doing something really completely alien to them. In, in the more senior years. So, um, yeah, send them our way.
Good stuff. Okay. Thanks very much for that.
Sharon, uh, Sharon, any response from the surgery regarding the old issue of, I don't know if it's a surgery. Not this one, the old age, older people.
Oh, I was thinking, what's that got to do with the radio? I was just trying to get my processes. Um, no, I sent them all the stuff through and we dropped the stuff in, but I've heard nothing from them, so. But saying that, we've actually given out sixty-four tickets so far, so there's only sixteen tickets left.
Okay, eight point three, grant aid, we're looking on that. Eight point four, youth grant aid, we're looking on that. And eight point five, larger grant aid, four.
Sorry, I was just, just going to say that they, they did, their representative, I forgot to mention, it did send apologies, which is on annual leave.
All right, okay. Well, that's quite comprehensively put, they said, there were lots of diagrams.
You have the, yeah, very positive, very.
Flashing stuff. Um. They're asking for a free room.
So, yeah, what we, what we all, what we funded in the last, the past couple of years, so it's five thousand pound plus free use of the elm room available for activity centre for two thousand and twenty.
Yeah, no, they want a bigger room, they're sort of, um.
Basically. No, elm rooms, what they want, yeah.
Sort of, true, elm room, okay. Um, the only query I would have is, uh, they seem to be running this in all sorts of, uh, wards and towns. Um. The, the grant from, s- grant from Almansbury, it was only fifty hundred. And, uh, Yate didn't give anything, nor did Kingswood. I just wonder why.
I'm pretty sure they, because those, I think those were newly established last year, so I'm pretty sure they will apply to, well, obviously Kingswood, there's no parish king in Kingswood, is there? But Yate, I'm pretty sure they will apply to Yate for grant funding, yeah. So.
Yeah, all right, okay. Yeah, good.
I think they were just trial projects in Kingswood and Yate.
So has anyone got any questions on this? It's got a significant amount of data in there, the.
Which is also.
Very well presented.
It's also brilliant, it's a free scheme.
Yeah, it's a, it's, that's a good one. One of the issues, um, I mentioned earlier as well today, is children have to be picked up going to the noon time, picked up for lunch. Then they'll be brought back for the next session. So it's, that's like a bit of a journey. So that's, otherwise, four times they have to come forward if they actually make it a.
They can't do it as a whole day thing. It's all to do with hospital regulations and that sort of thing. So they have to do it the way they do it.
But, uh, hospital.
If they stay for lunch, it's, it's definitely not for a right, yeah.
It's very different, it's a whole different ball game. It's a whole day thing.
Because we learned that when they were in the school, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it's very different.
It comes to comprehensive daycare, legally different, legally different, is it?
Yes, yeah. Kind of, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's lots of data here.
Oh, it's very well presented, isn't it?
That one attempted as well.
It is.
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Over about fifty-nine people a day, thirty-five people a day.
Okay, so are we gonna go with what's favorably requested on the front page?
Have you had the problem with that, isn't it fair?
Okay.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Would say it's like I did, right, I'd like it. So all those in favour? And that is you, no matter.
It's a resource for the community.
Yeah.
It is, exactly.
Right.
Obviously, that's not the issue of funding, that's from twenty twenty-one funding.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're also asking for permission.
Into a group?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you, yeah, so proposal is five thousand pound plus free use of the elm room down at Bailey's Court Activity Centre. That's what they've used the past couple of years.
Your possible proposal?
Yeah.
Because they used to be at the community school.
Yeah, okay.
And paid a reduced rent. And then unfortunately, the community school, I think, got, um, a better offer from, um.
They got a paying group and instead of making charges, people were going.
Much business. And so they said to the place, getting really sorry, but you can't come to us anymore.
Okay, okay.
So the elm room's smaller than they had at Bailey's Court, but, um, the secondary school, but works fine.
But they make use of the play area on the, you're saying as well?
Yeah, yeah, indeed, yeah.
Okay, then. Next meeting is sixth of April at seven P M. Please be prompt. Right, we close.
Okay, enjoy your week. Hopefully we'll catch up in the week.
Right, right. So all this stuff. Probably she's fine-lining the relationship.
One thing is, it's not beating, just if you're able to say something.
Unless you have the updates, it's just, it's not transferred from one organisation to another.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it doesn't have to be made aware.
So I'm saying.
Yeah, we just want to say.
I mean, I, I'm not. And there are the other things at the level, you know, if it's, uh.
If you can, yeah, it's hard to survive.
If it's advanced, if it's for children and. There's a lot of people who've used it in the community. I think it's all beautiful, you can use it to have a community. So. So, so, in terms of use, since it tends to.
No, no, there's.
On Facebook, so.
Could be more exciting, some of these.
They are, yeah.
Actually, I like the one on the, um, ethnic community on that.
Yeah, it's really interesting.
You know, I just, I thought, um, because we also, as town council.